2019, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, yes?
Councilman Scrinji?
Present.
Councilman Livingston?
Present.
Councilwoman Kraus?
Present.
Councilman Taylor?
Present.
Councilman Papastat?
Present.
Councilman Matso?
Present.
President Scanlon?
Present.
All seven here.
First up on the agenda, we're going to talk about the power Ely Park. Michael's here. Welcome.
Handouts to, uh... Everybody get a copy? I said more of the... For those that don't know me, I'm Michael Panasalem, the Director of Emergency Services for the county. Joined by Mr. Wesley here, who you shall be familiar with, the county legislator. And Ed Wright from CNS Engineering, who is our project management group that's contracted by the county. So, I'll give you a brief overview of the countywide public safety radio system project. And we'll talk a few specifics about Ely Park, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions. Overall, the county's in the process, and I'm on page two, of replacing its countywide public safety radio system, which addresses and needs to... The meets the needs for both police, fire, EMS, public works. It has capacity for the school districts and capacity for the hospitals as we move forward. The existing system is more than met its useful life. Got some components of it that date back to the 60s and 70s, some parts that are older than it. But it's the equipment and infrastructure is failing. So, right now, our countywide radio coverage is wholly inadequate. We have lots of different gaps. So, you can be a police officer in Johnson City and not be able to transmit in the Oakdale Mall. You could be a firefighter in the town of Binghamton, not be able to use your radio at your station. And the radio is the lifeline between the public safety officials and our first responders and back to dispatch. So, if they have an emergency or need to even get the information for the emergency after somebody's called 911, then it's all done on a public safety radio network. Furthermore, none of those agencies can talk with each other. So, police can't talk to firefighter, can't talk to EMS. A lot of them can't even talk to each other because we have 12 different systems currently right now. And that's all an outgrowth of the consolidation of 911 that happened in the early 90s. We never consolidated the infrastructure to go along with it. So, to date, the county's put about $10 million into getting us to this next step of upgrading it. And the second slide on page two talks about the different components that we've done. But a lot of infrastructure goes into it. So, this next phase is we have eight more towers, physical infrastructure towers to build, and then Motorola to come in and put the RF equipment on the system. So, on page three, our existing constellation of tower sites that you can see goes across the county. The dotted lines is what's called microwave. It's our link, you know, think of it as the cannon string. It's how the towers communicate with each other. So, currently, the different systems use different constellations of towers. In the new system that we'll talk about will be 16 sites. They're all going to be used by the same system. So, they will provide much better coverage across the county. Well, actually, we're contracted for a 95% coverage across the county. So, meaning that I can be a police officer on the street with my handheld radio, and in 95% of the county, it's guaranteed to work. The modeling shows it's going to be higher than that, but Motorola, and appropriately so, they won't guarantee anything higher than 95%. We're going to share some core infrastructure with Portland County, which is helping to build some redundancy for them and save some money for us. It will eliminate any of that interoperability issues, meaning that police officer can talk to the firefighter, who can talk to the EMS person, who can talk to the DPW provider, that plow truck driver. Moving on to page four, and I'm going quickly, but certainly stop me if you've got questions. The little triangles represent different towers. For the purposes of this meeting, don't... Certainly don't worry about the colors, but they're going to be scattered across the county. And we had a variety of public meetings across the county. And then, in particular, for Ely Park, we had one just for Ely Park. And certainly took all of the feedback that we could into consideration as we were working these... The tower sites are not picked randomly. They're picked very much by engineering models on what gives us the best radio coverage across the county, given our topography. We've got very poor topography when it comes to radio propagation because of all of our hills and valleys. So, if we move on to page five, very specifically towards Ely Park, currently and that has been there for an unknown period of time because we can't... Nobody can find any documentation. But there's an existing 90-foot radio tower that's at Ely Park that provides radio coverage for your fire department, specifically City Binghamton Fire, EMS, police, your public works. It also covers components of Johnson City Fire Department. So, that's going to be replaced. We're going to take down that tower once the new one is up and operational. It will go from what's a guide wire, considered a guide wire tower where it's got wires coming off the side of it, to a self-supporting structure. 195 feet. There's going to be a new equipment shelter. It's about a 50-by-50 fenced-in area. And on the next page, I'll show you some drawings of that. And then, we'll take the existing tower down. The city requested us... We're going to leave the existing structure that's there, as is. We'll return that back to the city. And we're going to do all this from the wooded side. So, there's going to be no impact on the golf course operations. The bottom of page five shows you the access road. And that we took... There was a lot of public feedback on that, on the trails that are used and not used that go through the woods now. So, that's how that was determined on where the road was going to go. On page six, although it's a small picture, the top one shows you the best rendering that we have of where the existing tower is and where the new one is going to be. If you're on the golf course, the new one's going to be in the woods. It's not going to be actually on the golf course the way it is now that you can play golf around the radio tower. So, the bottom of page six gives you an example of what a self-supporting tower looks like and what... It's not exact for Ely Park, but it's a representation of it. The top of page seven and the bottom of page seven... The top of page seven's an actual drawing of what the Ely Park one is going to look like. In particular, on this one, we're doing some more shrubbery and things like that. But on the bottom one is an actual picture of a site that's been built. They're all pretty similar. So, and then, on page eight, we just gave you a comparison of if we don't do Ely Park, and why we've been pushing so hard that we have to do Ely Park, is that we lose a tremendous amount of indoor coverage. So, on these drawings, green is bad, right? So, in particular, in the city, we wanted to make sure that we oversaturated and provided that extra amount of RF penetration because of the structural steel buildings that we have in the city of Binghamton. And so, these were mapped, modeled by Motorola with and without Ely Park. And so, Ely Park became a critical component to covering the city and providing the level of service that police, fire, and EMS are going to need to operate in the city. So, with that, provided a lot of information in a very short period of time. But happy to entertain any questions?
Yes, Councilman Livingston? Is there any advantage to leaving the existing building in place?
We... So, we're going to return it to the city. So, that'll be... That was a request of part of the going back and forth of what the mayor's office asked us to leave the building. We have no issues with that.
Okay. And will there be any gap in service from when the old tower goes down and the new tower goes up?
No, that's a great question. No, there won't be. There is a transition plan that will be put in place with Motorola. So, we'll construct the new tower now, basically, this summer. And then, in early 2021, we're going to start transitioning agencies onto that new tower. And once we've successfully transitioned them, we're going to take the old one off. We're not going to allow for any gaps in coverage.
And the footprint of the new tower site, is it similar or is it much larger than...
I would say it's difficult to gauge because it's different types of tower. Overall, it's probably smaller because you have the guide wires on the old tower, and this is self-supporting. But it's also more removed where the existing towers, they mow around it. You can, you know, see it, so...
Okay. Thanks.
Councilwoman Matso?
Yeah, you're not allowing any other, like, self cellular services on the tower?
Correct. So, the lease agreement with the city only allows for the Bundy Museum, which is something City Council had previously requested on the old tower that the county made space for. And that's an AM radio station. So, no, the lease agreement as is does not allow for co-location of commercial vendors.
When you had the meeting with residents of the city and with the town of Dickinson too, or...
Yeah, so, Ely Park was held at the Broom County Library, and it was open to both, to anybody. It wasn't limited by where you lived.
But the ones that are affected by it, do you have residents of the town of Dickinson affected by the tower also?
So, they... I guess define affected, but yes, they were invited to the public hearing.
By affected, I remember when they did that much smaller tower that's there now, probably, you know, less than 20 years ago, but probably about 18 years ago, more?
It's in the early 90s.
Early 90s? Yeah, there was... Consider... Consideration for if the tower was to ever lean off and...
Yeah.
It would hit the homes below.
So, that's not a concern now. This is a very different type of tower, and I can certainly speak to the engineering side.
The houses are quite a distance away. There's no... Even if it fell over, there's nothing for it to hit.
Good. Other questions?
Councilman Scrinji? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for... All of you for coming down today for giving a presentation. Number one, when the new one is built, what will be the time between when the new one is built and the old one is taken down? Is that pretty progressive, one right after the other, or is there some latency in between?
So, that's a good question. So, it basically, it depends on when we bring the City of Binghamton agencies online. So, let's say this tower is... Will be up by the end of this year. I don't have exactly when. It will be first quarter of 2021 when we'll start transitioning agencies. So, there could be up to a year. That being said, we've also looked at if we move some of the old equipment, can we transition to get the other tower down before the next golf season? I don't have... The longest it would be is that year. I don't have that finalized plan yet.
But that time to take down the old tower, that's kind of correlated with the transition, right?
Absolutely.
Rather than the new one being built because it's obviously still serving in its current role?
Correct. We won't... We won't... We will not decommission the old tower until everything has been transitioned off. And then, because it's in the middle of the golf course, trying to keep in mind with not disrupting golf. So, we probably won't take it down until the end of that golf season.
That makes sense. On page five, on the top slide...
Sure.
The new equipment associated with the new tower, more specifically the generator, is there a sense of potential decibels of noise that that might emit? If there's... If there is, is there anything that can be done to...
Good question. I can't speak specifically to decibels.
The generators are specified with a sound enclosure.
Okay, all right.
Plus, we're shielding the site with shrubbery.
Got it.
And so, it'll be pretty much shielded, and it's not below the level of the shrubbery.
Sure.
So, the generator only runs during power failures. It is not running all the time. It's a secondary source of power. And I can say the other sites, I've been outside when they're running, and you can have a conversation, so...
Okay, so it's pretty... Thank you. And then, on page four, on the proposed site new system map, there seems to be a blue boundary line that kind of flows through the City of Binghamton, Conklin. I was just wondering, is there a particular reason why that's...
There is, actually. So, in that... Within that blue boundary, we did a higher level of modeling and increased the amount of RF loss to try to portray what the structural steel buildings will do to the RF. So, yes. And most of those buildings, sure, they could exist in the outlying areas, but 95% of our housing stock that's like that is within that blue boundary.
Got it. And the last question that I had was, and again, thank you for your time. So, the town meeting that was held at the county library, was there a general sense? I know this probably might be a lot to bull list, but is there maybe any summation that you could provide in terms of broad points that were provided by the public and what the commission was actually able to take into consideration?
Absolutely.
Regarding anything that residents might have spoken about or small business owners or anything?
Yeah, absolutely. And I may be able to pull it up quickly. But off the top of my head, I think the biggest thing was how we were going to utilize the trails. I would say that was the top thing. The second thing was, was it going to be lit? Which we are not lighting this tower. There's no lights on it. It's below the FAA thresholds for it. And then, the third thing was whether there's going to be cellular carrier... Cellular carriers on it or not. And again, no, we... Our sites are all public safety sites. In this case, where the city doesn't want it, we're fine with that. Other municipalities do want it. And it doesn't matter us, as long as we're meeting the public safety need first.
Correct. And this might... Last one, this might be a question for a court of counsel, but I know you... I know it was mentioned that City Council back in the 90s had made that designation that with the current tower, they didn't want anything there. Is that something that hypothetically a future council could change?
Didn't want what?
Did I understand...
Cell carriers.
For commercial cellular.
Oh. I don't know if the original tower...
I don't even know. We didn't find good documentation on the original one.
I don't know one way or the other on that. Just saying, for the new tower...
Yeah.
Decided you didn't want to permit co-location in the first instance.
I got it. Thank you, Kevin.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Can I get a quick question? How is this going to be powered? Are you guys going to have your own meter on there? Like, right now, that meter is...
Correct. We are intentionally separating that meter off from the rest of the golf complex.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. I have the privilege of representing you over at the county, and I was very proud and happy to help move this forward and to make sure that our entire county and especially the city is well protected. I'd like to thank Mr. Panasalem and the people, the engineering firms and everyone. With your vote, Broom County will be so much safer. Please pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Livingston?
Good evening. Just looking to accept a grant, Sam Grant from Center Ash Car, to purchase a breathing air compressor system. Our current system, which we fill our SCBA's in so we can go into fires. Our current system is 20 years old. It's past its life. $68,000 he secured for us. So, I'm here to try and get you to accept the money.
Gee, that's a tough...
Free money? Councilman Livingston?
Dan, is this the compressor that you pointed out to me when you showed me around downstairs?
Yes, up on the upper floor at headquarters, yeah.
Okay.
Is there any city match for this, or is this entirely a designated grant?
100% grant.
Great.
Any questions? Thank you, Jayden.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think I'll have to go.
Let's hold you.
Are you going to sign it up?
Of course.
Mr. Crum, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good. What's your most, RL 19-68, please?
Yes, thank you. I'm here on behalf of our business manager who had a scheduling conflict. And the board is asking you to approve an ordinance to amend the 2018 Sewage Board budget to create a new line for digester number one and number two coating repair and crack repair that would be in any of the three digesters and to transfer funds to the capital fund for this purpose. And the amount involved is $180,000, which is based on an estimate that the construction manager provided plus a contingency allowance. Because you're working on structures that are original to the plant, 1966 vintage, and sometimes when you're working on that old concrete, you have unexpected situations. By approaching this project in this fashion, it saves money for the ratepayers, for the city and the village, because there's no interest involved as there would be if the money was borrowed through the bonding. This approach is designed to minimize delay to the Contract 10 general contractor, Quandell, which is working on the solids handling improvements. Because this involves the digesters, it's FEMA eligible under the improved project scope for the project worksheet 2268. So, that's another reason why the Sewage Board is in favor of this and involved with this because the Sewage Board is the applicant for the FEMA project worksheets. And this also... This approach allows the owners the flexibility to contract outside the existing contracts ongoing at the sewage treatment plant, which have a MWBE requirement of 30% on a new contract. And sometimes, that's very difficult to meet in a timely fashion in this local economy. You know, downstate, it might be different, but here, there's just not that much of an MWBE percentage in the local economy. This will get the digesters that are going to be worked on, primarily digesters one and two, three to four good years of use before a thorough coating is required. And that thorough coating in three or four years is very important because otherwise, you could have deterioration of the concrete further from where it is now, remembering that these are original to 1966. And we don't want to have the owners in a situation where you have to demolish and rebuild both the digesters, which at that point, three or four years down the road, could be a $30 to $40 million project, as well as the disruption to the solids handling process at the plant. So, we're asking you to approve this and expedite it on the Wednesday, April 3rd, business meeting agenda.
Questions?
Councilman Livingston?
How much of the $180,000 is contingency?
$30,000, 20% of the $150,000.
And how long did these liner... The current liners that are in there, how long did they last? Did they make it through the three, four-year...
There's no liner. It's concrete.
Oh, there is no liner? Okay. Thanks.
There's a coating, Dan, that goes on there. Not a liner, but it's a coating that they put on there that shields it off. There's no coating on there now.
Got it. And you said that the digesters are old, that they, you know, were part of the plant when it was built in...
Right, 1960s.
60s, yeah. Are they going to be part of the new plant once it's finished being constructed? Or they're not going to be demolished or...
Right, they continue to be used for the solids handling.
Okay. Thanks.
They're all getting... All the digesters are getting new covers. One of the covers has already been installed, and other ones in the process of being installed this week. That's just part of the progress as the project moves along.
And these covers, they're the ones that inflate with the bacterial action of the digester?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they're bubble covers.
Correct.
And they're dual membrane, you know, one has the gas, and then, there's an inert layer between that cover and the outer cover. So, it's the... It's heaven forbid, there's a lightning strike, which that happens every once in a while.
Other questions? Councilwoman Matso?
Yeah, aren't these the ones that were repaired before? And how long did that repair last?
No, these two have not had any repairs since 2006. I came on the board in 2007. So, if there were repairs prior to that, I'm not aware of it. Digestor three, you're thinking of. The larger one. These are the smaller two.
How's digester three doing? Reversed the hole, you know, on it or no?
Yes, there's some small crack they need to do some additional work on that developed over the winter. But, you know, as long and cold a winter as it was, it's not unexpected. It's wear and tear.
Yep. Interesting. How long did you say these... This coating would last at?
This isn't a coating. This is a crack repair, and there may be coating in some sections. And the goal is that with these repairs at this time, there should be a three-to-four-year use before more thorough coating, as was done in digester three, will be required down the road.
And I mean, I know there was conversation around these digesters a couple of months ago that didn't move forward.
Right. This is the same scope, although it's thought that it's going to be a little more intensive and take a little more expense than what was talked about a couple of months ago.
So, what changed?
Well, I think one of the things is labor market, and the materials cost has changed. It's gone up. And there may have been some other leaks that developed over this winter that, you know, the digester wasn't closed in. And so, that's a risk with exposed concrete.
Other questions? Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Welcome, Ray. RL 19-69, please.
Yes. As you know, the city has been working on the design of a new south-side interceptor along the Susquehanna to replace the piece that runs from... Holy Albert Street.
This is the six-word super interceptor? On Street or Duke Street?
Duke Street.
Duke Street, yes.
From Duke Street to Webster. The existing sewer right now runs real close to the river and has leaks and could fail. So, we started the process last year, and we hired Barton LeJudas and authorized the first piece of their scope, which was 30% design to come up with alternatives and then select the preferred alternative, which is to put in a gravity sewer. They are now at the point where we need to have this supplemental to move on to the final design work and to work with the PEC and the Army Corps to cross Pierce Creek and get the permitting for that, and get the plans and everything done. So, this is the next phase of the work.
Is this going where the house was taken down? It's going to be taken down? Or is it below it?
The city...
There's one on the left side, and the one on the right side was taken down, the one on the left side. And I know they've always had problems with the water there.
Yep. The city opted to take that parcel down separate and not use FEMA money because at one time, while this was going on, it was to be considered for a pump station. And so, rather than use FEMA money and then not be able to use the parcel again, we... The city opted to take it down itself. And then, if we did go with the pump station versus the gravity sewer, that's where the pump station was going to go.
Okay. Right, because I know the sewer used to back up into a couple of houses there. Big time.
Yeah.
It was nasty.
Right.
I saw it. This has been...
Supposedly, we get this project done, a lot of the backups would go away. The sewer... The interceptor's too small right now. It needs to be larger.
No, I remember it for the last six years. It was pretty... It was black as black and beet when it backed up into the house.
It is, it is.
Other questions?
Councilman Livingston?
Ray, are those rates that they provide to their employees, this Barton company, are these standard? Do they pay their office assistants $63 an hour? They pay their interns $60 an hour?
That's the charge fee. That's not what they get paid.
It's not what they get paid?
No. That's what they bill us. That's not what they get paid. Or there's overhead and profit. So, insurance, all that's part of that.
Councilman Crum?
What's the chance that we will need a pump station? Like, if we put this in and then we end up getting a pump station?
You won't.
Then why aren't we going to need it if we don't need one?
Because at the time, we didn't know.
But?
It was, it was either going to be a gravity sewer or a pump station.
Okay.
We didn't know until recently it's going to be a gravity sewer.
Okay.
That's, that's why that parcel is not being paid with FEMA money, it's being-
Would FEMA pay for gravity?
Gravity sewer.
FEMA's not paying for any of this.
Yeah. The FEMA, just to be clear here, so we had the FEMA demolition south of Susquehanna Street, we had a couple in the first ward, and Four Duke and One Duke, I think, across the street from it were identified as properties within the flood zone that were eligible for the FEMA flood buyout program and demolition program. One Duke across the street, we did demolish with FEMA funding. At the time, it was possible that a city-owned pump station would have to be cited in the area of Four Duke. So as the process was being done, to keep our options open, we chose not to use FEMA funding because had we used FEMA funding, we couldn't have constructed anything on that parcel, would have to be used strictly for flood mitigation. So by using CDGG or general fund money for that demolition, which I think is out to bid right now, we have essentially kept our options open. And so that was, that was the point, that if we went forward with a FEMA demolition and we did have to have a pump station there, we, we wouldn't be able to do it restrictively.
Yeah. Other questions? Thanks, Ray.
Yep.
You got one more?
We have one more, yep. The next one is, is the Heiner Road FEMA Improvements Project. And so this is to-
I thought this was the Heiner.
This is the Heiner, yes. This, this is multiple things. The first thing is, is to accept a FEMA grant for, I think, $136,000, is that?
It says 102.
102, okay. Well, let me, the whole project, it's having engineering group design it, which is 136,000. 75% of that is going to be paid through, through FEMA's federal thing. 12 and a quarter, 12 and a half percent is going to be paid by the state. The other 12 and a half is our responsibility. Okay, so the first thing we need to do is accept the FEMA funds, okay, and the state funds of, I think it's about 100, it's 87, 102 plus the other. Yeah. Okay, 102 plus the 17, plus the New York State. Yep. Okay. And then you've already, have you hired shoemaker? That's what this is. Okay, so then we're going to hire shoemaker, and to pay them, we have to transfer money to do that. Our, to come up with our 17% of the, our 12 and a half percent, which is $17,000. And that's coming from a code inspector for $4,900, another code enforcement officer for $3,200, and another code inspector for $3,700, and an assistant engineer that's been vacant for $5,097. That's how we arrived at our $17,000. We're doing transfers out of those accounts into a capital account. I don't know if you follow that?
Yep.
I do.
From vacant?
Yeah, vacant, yes. This is all, this, everyone is through this Friday, because no one can be hired before Friday.
Council Livingston?
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Is, is there a reason why we're, we decided to pull money out of the code enforcement for this?
It's empty money that-
It's empty?
Yes, it's not, it's people that are vacant right now to come up with that $17,000, how could we do it?
How long have those, so it's three vacancies in code enforcement, how long have they been vacant?
Well, the one is vacant because of-
Greg.
Castile leaving and-
Oh, yeah.
The guy taking it, oh, that's part of it. But, Dan, I really don't know exactly, I mean, you could-
They're all from this year's budget, so this is not money that goes back before January 1. Our new zoning officer vacated a line as well, right?
Yeah.
Because he went over, and that was very recent.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering how long they've been vacant for, you know, is this something that-
Second send it to you.
How long have we done without these positions that we're now going to do without?
The time retired went just recently.
Well, you're not, you're not going to do about, it's only money that hasn't been spent from the first of the year till now. It's not money that's-
Going forward.
Going forward. So if you hire somebody, they'll get their money, it's not that-
Great, we're not reducing code enforcement.
No.
This is just money that we have-
Money that didn't get spent because it was vacant.
Right.
Usually wanted to-
Is there a sense of urgency with this? Yes, yes. Yes, this needs, and I, I would like the other one expedited also, so that we can continue the design work without any delay.
Yeah, okay. Other questions on this?
Retired Wednesday.
No other questions?
All right, Ray, thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Yep.
And then Megan?
I'm doing Megan's RL tonight, so we can do Steve and Chuck first, and Rowan.
Hi.
Hi, guys. RL 19-63, please.
So this will be an additional $115,000 going to the Choto project at 435 State Street, also known as Community Potential Inc., I think it's the Choto name. This additional money will be used for capital expenses on the building of it and will allow us to, the first 100 we were putting in were allowing us to monitor, I believe, four units. This will allow us to have an additional four to five units. We've not finished up the paperwork on exactly what it's going to be, but that will encourage more, will guarantee that more lower income, either seniors or I'm not exactly sure what their Choto demographic is going to be, but providing affordable housing guaranteed for, I think, 15 years worth of monitoring.
When are we going to have information on that demographic?
I'd have to, I, I don't have the file yet, the person handling the file retired Friday, so it's the Choto, so it'll definitely be a low-income family, whether it's specialized, I'm not sure. Or low-income household, I should say, Australia family.
And this will increase the number to only eight?
It'll increase the number we're monitoring, so the guarantee, so when you put, when you put home money into a Choto project, what you're doing is you're guaranteeing that X number of units will absolutely be used for low-income households in the future for a period of time, usually 15, 20, 25 years. So this additional money will guarantee an additional group of people will be assisted, provide affordable housing. Now, the Choto itself may have additional, you know, its own guarantees, but this way the city can guarantee it.
Council Livingston.
And this money was not originally budgeted, this is being moved, moved over?
Correct.
Where's it being moved over from exactly?
Well, it's a Choto project, so the, the budget is, was the Choto money, was Choto money originally. So this is going back 43 and 44 unused Choto funds from the previous year. They can only be used on Chotos, so-
Is there any additional unused Choto money from those fiscal years?
From those fiscal years, I believe some of it already been assigned to it. This is kind of rounding out the rest of the 43, 44, the remainder of the 44 money, I think, is going to another project, so-
How much is remaining?
I couldn't tell you, I don't have those numbers in front of me, unfortunately.
What's the other project?
Finn's project on Virgil Liberty Area.
Gotcha. Any questions? Thank you.
Chuck, how about on RL 19-65?
How much is that one for? This one, I got, I know, okay, I got this one.
19-65.
This is to, when, when we go out for bonded projects, we say we're going to bond for the money, and then we say that there's some grant money to be received, we never record that grant money until the end of the year after we receive it. This is doing that, this is basically saying that we received $5.1 million in grant money to pay down the money that we borrowed. 5.1 from the federal, 238,000 from the state, so I'm reducing how much we would potentially borrow down to 5.368 million dollars. This is something I do pretty much every year.
Questions?
Some, some, if you guys want to, just to give you some ideas of where the money came from, it's like the Main Street Corridor project, State Street project, the reconstruction we're doing out here, big one is Front Street Gateway, Clinton Street Bridge, those are the big items.
Okay. On RL 19-66, Chuck?
19-66, we have a couple of projects that we bonded for that are completed, that we didn't expend all the money. One is, which is the installation of air handlers for this building here, which was $89,216 that we came in less than what we budgeted. And the East Clinton Street Bridge came in $576,276,000 less. We really can't spend this money on anything but these projects, these projects are done, so I'm taking the money out, so we won't spend it.
Where does that money go?
Because we just don't borrow for it, it's, we never spend it, it just takes it out of the line.
Oh, just takes it out of the line? It's just never expended?
So we never did borrow for it?
No, we did not.
Okay.
It's money that we came in lower than, say that we budgeted 2 million, I'm making this up, we only spent 1.5, I'm getting rid of that, $500,000.
So, so when we, when we, when we bond for something, we don't bond for?
We, we, originally, we don't, originally, we banned, we say we're going to ban for up to $2 million on this project, but during the process, we only spent 1.5, so that's all we banned for.
Okay.
So I'm taking out the 500,000. Now, just taking that scenario, say that we got a million dollars in grant funds, I would take that 1.5, reduce it by a million dollars from the grant fund, and only borrow 500,000 long-term.
Okay.
Other questions?
Chuck, one hand here, I've got a question for you. Who handles our liability and property insurance?
We have no liability insurance, we sell insured, the property insurance, it is- It all goes through Steve. Yeah, but is it Travelers? Yes, Travelers, actually, we, it is Travelers that handles that. And we also have that ambulance insurance too, which is a, is that, I classify that as a liability thing or not?
Yeah.
That, that goes through Lloyd's of London.
Yes.
Okay?
So Steve handles the property, Steve's, he's not in town, he's an in-town guy or out-of-town guy?
He's an out-of-town guy.
Is he in it for a while? Because I get asked by people that own insurance companies in town about the property insurance thing.
He's had it for as long as I've been here, and you know how long he's had it for.
What's the renewal date?
I believe it's July or August.
Shouldn't we throw it out for renewal? He's had it for a while?
No, they, they, this is not, he's an agent.
But I understand.
He's like our broker.
I understand, yeah. I get that.
He bids it out.
Well, I still think-
The broker bids it out, is that what you said?
Well, they all have, they all have people, insurance companies, that use a quote.
So you got insurance companies that might have five different insurance companies.
They all represent different insurance companies.
So Tom, what you're saying is that when, if it, is that a renewal, can we look at getting a local firm or can we?
Well, that's, I mean, I'm not saying, but let's draw it, let's put it out for a quote, and if the guy gets his head forever, then so be it, you know? But I, I think we should put it out for a quote if he's had it for that long. That's my opinion, on one voice.
We have a similar situation with the workers count too. Ken, I-
But that's an actual carrier.
Yeah. Well, it, no, that's the same as Steve.
Same thing, one, two, three.
They're, they're saying bid out Steve's job.
Exactly, yeah. Steve's in it for once, it never thrown out there, a year, it's been everything he did.
Tom, let me, let me talk to Ken and the mayor and see.
How long has, how long has it been with this particular company?
Been as long as since I've been here, since 2014, I don't know when he actually came on board, I don't know that.
Doesn't hurt to look.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, doesn't hurt to look. He's a low guy, he's a low guy.
I do have a couple other things here, Paul, if you guys have a few minutes. We finalized, let's say, the contract for Seven Holly Street, okay? There's some work that needs to still be done on it, okay? But in, in agreement, I think, Ken, we could say that we have the contract finalized. With that, the Pike is going to go out and get us a guaranteed maximum price, okay? That number's going to be done on, or we should have that on April 12th, maybe earlier, okay? Won't guarantee it, but we ask them no later than April 12th, so that we can come here on April 15th, present that to council, who has to approve the guaranteed maximum price, Ken, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then ask you to expedite that on the 17th, to vote on it. We're asking, telling you this in advance, if you have questions or concerns about it, can you feed it to us before, and we don't know what the total cost is, okay? Yeah, we won't know that till the 12th, but if there's other questions or things that you want us to bring to the 15th, let us know. And Ken, I just realized this, I won't be here the 15th, I'm going to be up in Boston, my daughter's running an N marathon, so.
So get questions to Chuck before the 15th.
But we'll get you everything, I mean, we should have a very good rendering and all that information for you on the 15th or possibly before, and we'll send that to you as soon as we get this information.
Actually, I think they're going to COD on the, COD on the night.
On the Wednesday, that Wednesday.
On the night, so if anybody's interested, go to the COD meeting, once that gets signed off, we can circulate that as well.
And basically, some of the things in COD, hopefully gets all approved, could have an impact.
Is that the total price for the parking ramp?
The parking ramp, to build up the parking ramp.
Right.
Okay, we have some additional costs associated with someone monitoring that.
Okay.
Okay, the construction manager-
And the street reconstruction.
And the street reconstruction, we have to do in the water and sewer lines, okay?
Sure. They're kind of letting us know now, so it's not expedited.
Correct, and in particular, because there are five Mondays in April.
Right.
So you wouldn't have another meeting for three weeks, so it's not going to sit for three weeks.
And at this point, we're still hopeful that we can get this done by the end of November, that is still, we may, maybe a little bit tight at this point in time, okay, but-
It's a good, I mean, you got to have a good point in November to drink, they can do that.
Basically, if we get it approved on that April 17th time period, okay, he basically said he could start no later than the first week in May. Okay, they're ready to go. Okay, originally, they were going to start around the last week of April, he still might be able to do that, but that is still a legitimate timeframe.
Council Livingston?
Is there anything else you needed on that one, or is that everything on that one? I got one other thing.
Hold on, Council Livingston, you have a question for you.
Chuck, I was at the last COD meeting, it seemed like there was a fair amount of discontent over the design of the facade in particular, of the parking ramp, is that, is that going to be resolved by the time?
Yes, I think it all has been resolved. Okay, there's been a lot of dialogue, okay, between planning and Pike and-
Because they didn't want to vote on it, they were-
Well, a lot of it was because the windows looked commercial and they didn't want it to look like commercial windows.
And it was like the bricks, they thought looked chintzy because they weren't, you know, they didn't look like bricks, they looked like sort of a brick facade. They, they had like a bunch of concerns, I was just curious to know if they had resolved that.
I mean, the bottom line is, you can't make it brick without, we're already expensive on this project, you're bringing up another two or three million dollars. It's going to be a concrete structure with brick in there, okay, which is a common thing.
You don't have to explain it to me, I was just making sure you explained, you had gotten it all worked out.
And some, some of the things that came up there, like some of the doors and stuff and the window sills, were good suggestions that are being crafted.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions on that? All right, Chuck, what else do you have?
I want to let you know that last week, in the budget you guys approved for some bans to go out, like the projects to do this year, that went out to bid last week, and the bid came in at 1.8% on net for a year, which is down from last year. Okay, last year was 1.85%, and that's a positive thing. We also went to a rating call with Moody's, hopefully we will hear something sometime this week, probably Wednesday, maybe Thursday. I don't expect them to increase it, I don't expect them to increase it. Two other real quick things, the Teamsters blue colors, I was coming down here, approved the contract that we had been negotiating, okay? been negotiating, okay? With a vote, I think it was 75-25, so that'll be coming down to everybody. Can't give you all the details because I don't have it all here in front of me, but I could tell you this started back in 2017, and it was approved today.
Good, congratulations.
That goes to Trish, okay? I don't know if she, I think the mayor text her, but she did a lot of work on it. And lastly, just to give you an idea, back in February, you guys voted for like a New York class that I could invest some money in there. And basically, I put, in the beginning of March, I put basically our fund balance of like 23 million, actually 22.1 million dollars in there, and for the month, we made $39,900 in interest.
Great. It's a good thing.
That's all I have. The other one is Chase is the one that bought that ban, if anybody cares. They're also one of our banks, so...
Any questions for Chuck? We're good, Chuck, thank you very much.
Good work, Chuck, thank you.
There, Karen, thanks for the compliment. Well, Jared's getting into place, if anybody has seen, pressing some bulletin or in the paper, the profile of this man, Johnson City, that's Brian Seacrest's father. Okay, just wanted to let people know, just, you wouldn't...
What was that?
They don't mention the names. There's a profile, and it starts off, this is Johnson City man, 72, cut a heart for people. That's Brian Seacrest's father.
Oh, great.
Who passed away in December.
I didn't see that because I don't think it was...
It was in the actual paper, I think, on Sunday.
Okay.
But it's still online now, if you scroll down.
Jared, on to RL 19-71.
Let's, can we do 19-67 first? This is one that has Megan's name on it. 23 Frederick Street was a property that the city demolished. And it was part of our side lot program. This is on the jog on Frederick Street in between, basically the Brandywine Highway and State Street, everyone's familiar with, there's the River of Life Church. And so, this is a property that had been condemned and in terrible condition for years. The city was able to get ownership of it. This is a neighbor behind the property who would like to expand their backyard. They have no open code violations. Planning assessment has also approved of the property. So this would be to sell the property for that person to expand their side lot, canvassed nearby, other nearby property owners, and they did not respond.
Questions?
You said they didn't respond or they weren't home?
No, we send out letters.
Oh, okay.
We send out letters, and somebody, if they're a jointy property owner, we send letters to them to let them know a neighbor has made a bid, would they be interested? So if they don't respond, we move forward.
Got it. He's at Canvas, I thought, but Doc, I don't know where that guy is. Thanks.
Hey, Jerry, where are we gonna go next?
Well, how about 19-71? So a couple summers ago, there was a public art project at Columbus Park, I think City Council's familiar with, with Emily Javlon. And it was kind of a phased approach, and this is to support kind of the next phase of that project. Emily works with youth through BOSI's, it's a summer youth employment program. Last time she worked through the Housing Authority, but basically, it's a public art project for the wall at Columbus Park. If you look at the wall, there was a portion of it done. We'd like to support that continuing to finish the project, and I think that beyond 2019, there will be additional grant funding available through the Greater Binghamton Fund for additional murals and public art in that area. So this allows us to support the project. Emily will have to help with CDVG's paperwork, which she's familiar with, and, you know, sort of run the program. So this is just for the cost of the public art improvement, just again, to keep that project moving forward. It's one that we support. I think there's other plans for other mural-type projects at Confluence Park, which again, we support, but getting funding and leveraging funding is kind of the most critical piece. So this allows us to move forward and continue to beautify the park.
Counselor Livingston? So you said you're taking, you took a phased approach with this? Can you elaborate on that?
Well, there was, in 2017, the entirety of the wall was not able to be done. And so if you look at the wall right now, Columbus Park, part of it is done and part of it is just blank, so...
And was that a conscious decision to have it done that way?
Well, I think that the, that's what the artist was able to do with the funding that she had at that time.
Oh, so the, okay. And as I recall, there was an issue with access to water and bathroom in the park? Has that been resolved for this, for this leg of the finishing of the...
Yeah, I'm confident we can, we can figure that out. I don't know if it was necessarily a huge issue, but that's something that we can work with, and it'll be fine in this round.
So there's gonna be bathroom access and water access?
I'm just saying that'll be worked out with the, with Emily. I know that they're utilizing some space nearby as well at Columbus School, so by some means, we can, we can figure it out and keep moving the project forward.
So I remember last time, she was filling the buckets from the splash mark because she didn't have access to water on the site. I think it was a big, a big issue.
No, it was a safety issue.
What was the safety issue?
I can't discuss those.
Has the safety issue been resolved?
The safety issue?
Counselor woman Cron said there was a safety issue, and that's why there wasn't water access for Emily Javlon. I'm just asking.
I think it was more of having someone on site to open and close the bathrooms, but like I said, I will, that all will be figured out as part of this round, and I don't anticipate it being an issue.
Okay. And just one last question. During the mayor's State of the City address, he mentioned that Columbus Park was gonna be seeing some improvements. Is this, I just want to make sure that we're investing $10,000 bucks in finishing this mural, that there's not gonna be some conflict with the new design that the city is gonna put in place for Columbus Park?
No, no. It'll, this is, this is not related in any way to those improvements. It's, I wouldn't even say it's in the same geographic area. This is just on the front facade.
Cool. Thanks.
Other questions, Counselor John Cron?
I have one, and it has to do with last time Emily was working on the wall in Columbus, she would use it to push political...
Okay, we're gonna go into a personal thing, we should go to the executive session, I believe. I go to the executive session?
Why would this apply to executives?
Well, I don't know, you mentioned a person's name and...
Danny, what I would say is that, I would say that we're looking towards the future and promoting this, this area in public art and trying to kind of turn a page on any issues in the past, and, you know, we're supportive of it, and I think it'd be a positive and a collaborative effort that we can kind of all work on. And I'm aware of what you're talking about, but I think it's kind of in the past.
It's a positive approach from the mayor's office.
We're trying.
Gaddy, you all right with it?
I'm not excited yet.
Other questions on RL 19-72, 71, I'm sorry. See none. Jerry, let's move on to RL 19-64.
So this is just the agreement, based on the presentation. So just to give a little bit more information on, you know, a lot of the other sites that the county was using for these facilities were on county-owned land, so the Towne of Maine, and they can kind of, you know, throw these things up. So certainly with the city and the fact that it was parkland, that there was kind of a huge jump in the height, we really wanted to make sure that things were done right. They had input from COD, and the information that Mike Poncello provided about that resident meeting was 100% true. They were mostly worried about the hiking access. That was the principal concern. So we worked through a couple different iterations, and we think that that's one that everyone will be satisfied with, both the golf course management and the residents there. So I can say that this went through thorough review from all of the necessary agencies. COD certified that all of the historic prerequisites were met when it came to Healy Park Golf Course, meaning somewhat of a historic site, so we're top...